Russian.
Get used to Russian.
All right, we're gonna call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, March 14th, 2019. I'm just like to start off the meeting, I think we had a good town meeting and a good election. I say that reserved because we had very low percentage turnout. We were probably most reflective on that, the fact that it was nothing contested. But it was on event form and there was no snowstorm. Okay, now move on to old business. I got minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Lean, do you have my minutes here?
I gave them to you, they're flat, it was a little green.
Okay, a little green, flat?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 7th, 2019 meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, all, any further discussion on that? Check those right there.
Oh, was that in your pile?
Check that. Okay, I don't think I could have, I didn't think I had them.
I read them, that's covered.
Okay. Ah, Lean.
Yeah.
You went prematurely, you should give me another 10 seconds, Bob had the good ice idea.
I did have them.
Okay, well, we had, again, we all, any further discussion on these minutes?
No.
Here it on, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment. Mike, you're on the agenda, so stand by, unless you have something else to separate? No? Okay. Leo, anything about public comment?
No.
Close public comment. And Lean, do you have a check in the amount of $60?
I've got cash in the amount of $60, so that would be yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for many of my colleagues.
I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-B, Roman numeral 3, paragraph B, to accept a donation to the race across Dunbarton in the amount of $60.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip the next second agenda item that's not gonna be discussed tonight.
Okay.
It's gonna be deferred for now. And Michael, you are out. We've got an email from you.
Yep, so I've got some pictures.
Okay. And I know that wasn't there last week.
No, no.
Okay. Tell me what's going on and what can we do. Thing is, I, I just, for the record, I, I met with Mike and we went up to, I went up to his house and we looked at the width of the road and we agreed to disagree. I, I thought the shoulder was, there was some plowing going on, extends to the shoulder, and you thought it was a little too much, and I think we respectfully just agreed to disagree on that one.
Like I said that night, Mike, I'm I'm not gonna take the position where I'm gonna respectfully disagree about it, that's my problem.
Understood. But at the same time, our council looked at the court decision.
Yes.
And our, our plan was emailed to you and it includes maintaining 12 to 15-foot rope, as it does varies, and that includes some shoulder work in support of the width, the travel width.
No.
Okay, that's where we disagree then.
You're right. And
And
And to that, I've written a letter.
Okay.
Which I'll read to you now.
Okay.
I haven't sent it yet, you'll send me that when I get home and I get the
Okay.
Town Highway Department continues to exceed Judge Kissinger's ruling of a 13 to 15-foot right-of-way in front of my house. Failure by the snowplow operators to maintain themselves with a 15-feet of the posts in front of my house that have butted right-of-way have caused damage to my lawn by 18 to 19 feet from these posts. The Highway Department has to navigate a few spots along Kelsey Road that are narrower than the 15-feet in front of my house. The ledge and trees by a log cabin and along a stone wall I share with Spencer and Dan and all. No problem. In front of my house, it's broken post or given a three-foot leeway. The day I received Judge Kissinger's decision, I'd pulled up all the posts on the north side of the right-of-way, so there'd be no doubt I was going to abide by his ruling. And have done so to this day. I've even gone so far as to allow the use of a carriage house here in front of my barn for stacking of snow, which is I find the Highway Department's behavior in front of my house nothing but vandalism. If it continues, I'm gonna treat this, this behavior as criminal. It's time that the town began to live up to its end to the judge's decision. Now, as far as what you keep saying about a place to stack snow, all along that road, like I said, and it's narrower than what it is in front of my house, they find a place to stack snow, or the road, the road is actually narrower. So, if the town's got no problem going through these areas, why it becomes all of a sudden important in front of my house on a piece of property that, that's been taken by prescription, which you get to use, you get to take what you used. You don't get to take, take, and then, well, we gotta add on another three or four feet to build snowbags. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable to me. And like I said, it continues to happen because it seems like the town is either unwilling or unable to reel in the snowplow operates. And they just go down there and do whatever they want.
I will, if you can email that letter, I will share it with town council and see if town council agrees or disagrees with you. Because at this point, I, I don't have any, we may have to go to litigation or get a clarification from town council, but we differ in our interpretation of how the court rules and I like to get counsel before I, I can't make a decision without getting advice.
That's fine. I'm taking the position Judge Kissinger stated 13 to 15 feet.
Right, but there's inherent interpretation of that is, includes shoulder. And that's where we disagree.
Okay. Then I would wanna know what shoulder you're talking about, because I provide that as it stands now, or just like in the letter, those posts in front of my house, they have butted right-of-way. They're not in the right-of-way, they have butted right-of-way. Some of those pictures in there, you can see exactly how close they can get to those posts. And you saw, if we're taking pictures, the snowbank that's been left out there is three feet off of those posts.
That, it's, well, 15 feet, it's three feet off the right-of-way, off the road, travel, travel portion off the road, yes. I do agree with you there.
Okay. So, like I said, it's
Okay. If you would be so kind to email that, that way I can, I can not interpret your concerns, I can have them directly sent to our council and see what they have to say. Okay?
Okay.
Because I'm hearing one story and I hear your story and I'm stuck in the middle and I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not a road expert. I have the road agency tell me one thing, I like to see if the road, if our town attorney agrees or disagrees with it and then we can move on from there. And I will share the results of his opinion with you.
Okay. I don't expect, there might be another snowstorm or two.
No, but the thing is, I don't wanna wait till November to be talking about this again.
Oh, I, I think we'll end up talking about it before that because it's mud season and the grader's gonna have to go out.
Right.
And now, is the grader gonna go down there, ooh, look at this gravel, let me just scrape this gravel up. And then there's the 18 feet. And then people start driving on it, whoa, Jesus, we got 18 feet, we're gonna put the snow back, well, let's push it up to 19 to 20 feet.
Well, that's, that's pushing the envelope, I think.
Well, it's, it's what's been happening in front of my house, it's what's been, it's what the town has done with me and my property since 2006.
Okay. Let me, as I said, I, I share with my plan, which we're gonna, I'm gonna enable, and I will share the results with you. Bobby, you have any problem with that?
Oh.
Okay. I'm not even asking this gentleman, because Dave, I don't want to lose your authority. And Lean, if you could just get that from, when Mike sends it to you, I'd be most grateful.
Okay.
That way, that way I don't interpret you differently than what you're presenting. Okay?
That's probably the better method, maybe we should have used earlier.
Okay, well, the thing is, our lawyer did give us some latitude.
No, but I mean, at least that concern's shared that way, so we got a definitive answer.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Lean is, we have 2019 selectman appointments, I wanna go through those tonight. If we feel uncomfortable with making these appointments tonight, we can wait one week, there is no urgency, but I like to get going on this.
So in your packet, I did provide you with the excerpts of the minutes from March of 2018. And you also have behind the blank sheet on the front, last year's appointments, a date that they were appointed. If you wanna review those and then make some decisions or comments.
These are the previous ones?
Correct.
Yes, 2018.
Yep, and they're also on that second sheet.
Do you wanna start and just go down through them, Mike, or do you want to do?
We can start going through it. I'm gonna be open to, I wanna make this as informal as we can, so we can just have a free, free thoughts here.
Pre-discussion?
Yeah. Pre-discussion, okay, Bob?
Sure.
All right.
Start right with the first one, Mike.
Selectman's
Selectman's rep it's called, but really it's chair, selectman's chair, right?
Yep, yep.
Now, I don't know how it worked on all boards, but I think from what I've seen in the past, and Lean might be able to help us better than anybody. I think that the chair was a rotating chair mostly after somebody was there, the third year, they would become chair.
I think Les, the whole term that I was, he was on board, was the chairman.
Because that's what I thought they were doing before that.
And then after Les, it was Brian Pike, and he filled that position for a number of years.
Yeah.
There really weren't too many rotations, so.
What do you guys want to do? You guys had any thought with it?
Well, the thing is, I wouldn't mind continuing as chair, unless you gentlemen had, either you two had problems with the, or thought I could, you could do a better job or whatnot. No, not a better job, but if you thought I was doing an inferior job, I'd be willing to step down as chair. So I'm open to that. I like, I'm in favor of what Bob said, what we've done with the other committees, that we should rotate them to make sure we get a snap, inputs, we understand that, a joint loss committee. As an example, it's good to know, have a concept of what's going on across the town, and that's one way of getting it. But going back to a chair, I'm, I'm open, and the thing is, if someone has a burning desire to become chair, I'd be willing to debate that with them.
I would like to be chair one day, I think while this stuff is still going on with Kelsey Road, I think that we should maybe continue with you being chair so you can address those issues, and if I run again in the future, maybe in one of the future appointments, I can become chair.
I'd be very minimal of that.
What are your thoughts of that, Bob?
I don't have a problem, in fact, you know that, refused that last night, because Mike had done it, it made more sense, and he was willing to put in the time, because it does take some time during the day. There's a familiarity with working with the town administrator and the same person trying to address problems, rather than trying to guess what is on the other person, new person's mind, so I think a consistency would be good. I don't have a problem if you wanna be the second, the co-chair. Because it makes no difference, because in reality, we all kinda act on our own, with our own opinions.
Yeah, I think we're a very fair board, I don't think one person has a way to vote over the other.
No. And the only thing is, it ends up that our decision directs the chair as to what direction he may handle a problem with, you know.
Regardless of my personal opinion.
Can I just speak up on that also, typically on my part? I will contact the chair if I have something of urgency, any quick response, then I'll move on to
That's why I get all the phone calls.
Co-chair, and then I'll move on to the third person, so that, you know, availability is, is very helpful.
Yeah, I feel, you know, that would be useful for Mike to stay as chair this year, but in the future, if I run again, I'd like to look at that maybe, and maybe, maybe the majority of Kelsey Road issues, hopefully someday will be over.
You think?
So, with that being said, I'll just start and make a motion on that first one, or we can go through them, I guess, and label them, we did them all at one time last night.
Okay. Let's, co-chair.
Go through them, so I'll put Mike Kaminsky on that first one.
Yeah.
Co-chair. I think it's a, I think, I think you're both co-chairs today, because I get input from both you guys.
We both act the same, but I don't have a problem if Dave wants to be co-chair, it doesn't, because in a sense, if you're missing a meeting, he would be the chairman anyhow.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, well, I'll do that one for this period of time, Bob.
And all you have to do is recuse yourself if you comes up with Kelsey Road.
Yep. Planning Board rep. I've done that for two years. And that's a, I'm gonna say it's a challenge. The zoning board experience helped, Dave. But the thing is, it's, it's not, they have to meet, they meet once a month as a minimum by RSA. And so it's a time commitment, so I'm willing to share that with Mike, any one of your two colleagues, if you wanna do planning board.
What are you thinking, Bob?
Well, I was gonna mention, I'm gonna stay on the committees I'm on.
Okay. I wanna do, do planning board, but I do know that eventually there's gonna be a eventually there is gonna be a situation where Mr. Guy comes in for a subdivision. So right at this point, I would like to make a co-chair for that planning board position as well, and the reason I wanna do that is because we didn't do that last year, and I sat in for Mike one time.
And was
It was a non-voting member, basically. So I could give input to the meeting, but it was non-binding input, so I think we should do a co-chair on that as well, just so we
They can always maintain a forum.
Yes. What are your thoughts with that, Mike?
I have no, that's a great idea, and you beat me to the punch, I was gonna recommend that too.
And if we do it at this meeting here, then it's not done right in advance of the meeting, and it's done as a regular thing.
Yep.
So
Any burning desire by anyone to be on the planning board?
Listen, you've just got a taste of it, so why don't you continue?
Yeah. You're so nice guys. And I recommend Dave as the co-chair.
Yeah, we'll do co-chair on that, so.
Not a co-chair, that would be, would that be, that'd be the alternate, the alternate selectman rep.
They will, they will not allow it under alternate name, I don't think, for voting.
Okay.
Co-chair, I think is adequate, and then, and you're just acting on behalf of Selectman's rep.
Well, that's true, because I'm already co-chair up top.
Okay.
Yeah.
But co-chair to the planning board.
Yeah, it has to be co-chair of the planning, because if you don't specify planning on this list here,
Yeah, planning board co-chair.
Right, I'll leave it at that, okay.
So we'll add a line to that, Lean, I guess, all right?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Okay. That's good, highway safety rep, Dave, you've been doing that?
Yeah, I don't mind continuing that one, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Anybody else wants to jump into it or not?
Well, who wants to supervise and bind that new truck?
I guess I'll keep doing that.
All right. Joint Loss Committee, no appointment needed, Dave, you've been doing it this year.
Yeah, like you said, we should spread that around, well, Bob had done it prior to me.
Yeah, you might.
No, that's, that's, I'll, I'll take that.
Why don't we put you on there, Mike?
Meeting next week, Mike.
Oh, jeez.
Now, Mike, would I like to make sure, and Bob and I both followed up, that you at least get something small done in each of the meetings.
Hey, things will replace a hot water heater tonight, be nice.
All right.
You have to remember one thing, your joint loss committee is supposed to be dealing with employee safety.
Well, the hot water heater.
But at the same time, they're gonna talk about problems they have with some, because you get a chance to go through a building and at least look at, and most of the time, you're supposed to focus on safety features, but it doesn't mean you can't look at other things. That's where you get the exposure.
I would also, I would also like to see that desk get in the town clerk's office, so we can stop, we can erase that one off the list. So Mike, I
I think she and her deputy have been working on that with Mike Cummings.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how many months it's gonna take to work on it before they get something going.
Less than the chalk.
We're talking about a couple-hour desk, you know?
Yeah, but less than the chalk.
All right. All right, continue on. Bobby, you stay with the town.
I'll stay on that.
Just to let you know, on a side, just, I got verbally, I almost said verbally accosted, yeah.
Reprimanded?
No, accosted by, by Mr. Stevens.
John?
John, about town restoration, he had his, had some ideas, and I said, John, I says, you got a guy, I, my recommendation was, he had to come as a committee recommendation, not one person.
Okay.
Okay, continue on. Tom Forrest at KFC, Tom Forrest.
I'll continue doing that as well, I do go to their meetings and we've been talking about the fields at the top of Goran Pond and we're mid, midway through, making sure that they spread that fertilizer.
Okay.
And continue with those, so.
Police Department rep. I'd like to be a secondary there if, if, if no one's around for that. And the reason why, I don't, I don't, Dave, I don't mind you doing that again if you want, but the thing is, I like the, I thought we were it could have been better communication from the police department to the board of selectmen when it came to the school resource officer position, and there was not. And there are things that's starting to surface as far as the way they make purchases in the department, that probably need some selectman input, I'll leave it at that, so if you want to continue, Dave, I'm good with that.
We're just looking down through the rest of these. Yeah, I think I'll do that with you, Mike, and we'll kind of do it
Tag teaming, okay? Okay. I'm just concerned about some of the purchases, and like last week's.
I like to be involved in it somewhat, I think you guys will remember that I sat down with them when I first became selectman and asked if there were any issues that they thought that the town could help them with, and the only issue that came up at that time was that overtime for the part-time employees for the holiday, which we rectified.
Yep. Conquered Regional Wisk, can we get rid of that one? We're not doing that anymore, are we? Co-op?
I think Woody's still involved, and he's an active voting member.
So I think we'll appoint Patrick Bowden.
Yeah.
But the thing is, I thought it was resolved, we got money back on the way, I thought it was no longer that co-op, that was for the single stream, was it not? Or is it something different?
No, this was different.
Energy Committee?
I'll, I'll stay on that.
Okay. Historical Awareness Committee, Bob, you're on that.
I'm on that, so I'll stay on that, too.
Hey, Bob, just to jump back on line item number six, the Town Hall Restoration Committee.
Yeah.
Can you, can we make me a second on that, only for the simple fact, Bob, I think that that's gonna be a project with a lot of involvement this year, and I'd like to maybe go to those meetings with you and try and
Put your construction experience in?
Yeah, I can.
Sure.
Okay, the only thing is, if the two of you are there, I have to post it as a meeting.
If we, even if we have it on this list as a color.
Well, all we could do, we could, we could do every other one. They have them every month, that way there you get familiar.
Okay.
You know? Because they're gonna bring up some of the same things every month.
Right. And it's a building that, you know, I think over the next couple of years, we wanna start working on more and more, so I think that I'd like to get it.
Okay.
Mike, can I just interject for a second? I do get a lot of these committees' minutes, if it's easier for you guys, I can start forwarding the minutes that you're rep to
That would be great.
or non-rep to, so that you know what's going on when the other selectman is there.
Right.
That would be real good.
Yep. Capital Improvement Plan. There was no media, I had not, I, I'm gonna tell you what, I did nothing on Capital Improvement Plan this house here.
Why don't we keep you on it until Mike and Casey update it?
Okay.
Right?
Well, I was gonna switch that with you, Dave, since you're on joint loss. I was trying to cite and give you
Oh, you like the joint loss, okay, I'll do that way.
Best negotiation.
So we're gonna do Dave Melv
All right, make sure we do a improvement plan this year.
Lean, can you give me this, exactly, Lean, revise it just so we can
Yeah, have a clean copy?
All right. Do we have consensus, gentlemen? We can vote on it in a minute.
Think we do, now I can make a motion if you want.
And make, make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the revised appointments as presented tonight for the 2019 Selectment Representatives to the Boards and Committees.
As discussed, number one through 12. I'll second it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? No, I, I think the biggest improvement will be, one of the shortcomings we had last year was on the planning board, and the thing is, Dave did represent me, but it was unfortunate for my vote.
Right, so I think if we do a co-chair on that
I'll be proactive on that.
Yeah.
That way, even if I, I couldn't attend, you could cover for me.
Yeah, and vote.
In vote.
And I know by looking, reading the RSA, it had to be done at this meeting to appoint
Right.
An alternate or co.
Okay, any further discussion, Bob?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
2019 appointments made. Thank you. All right. Continuing on. Mailbox now, town business mailbox items. If you recall, the chief came in, or really, I think Sergeant Romanar came in and bought a grant for one of these flashing speed limit signs, portable. We got approved for the grant, I signed it, but the thing is, I, I wanted them to hold it until we, I wanna make sure we had consensus that we're gonna approve it. We encouraged him to apply for the grant, if you recall, but I wanted, I didn't want him to send it without making sure we have consensus.
Can I also point out that Dan said he did not put the money in his budget this year, so he does not have the funding to make that 50% match.
It's $1,300. That's, that's gonna be a decision then.
I think we should, I think we should go ahead and do it and send it in.
I think it's a deterrent from away traffic, so, you know, I think that's important.
Yeah, that will be, his portables can be used more than one place, it doesn't have to be restricted to the page's corner, like a 30 mile an hour speed limit here, and they can adjust it down, like during home, old home day, they can move it around and put it, put in 15 for people coming through here during events.
This isn't the ones that you call. This is on a sign that's there.
Okay. So, no, I, I thought it was, it was portable. It was portable.
Yeah, it's not the towable one.
No, not the towable one.
But you have to attach it to a post.
Right, you do, so it is
Semi
It's movable, but semi, it's not, it's not gonna be, you know, a towed rig around town, so.
Yeah.
Well, keep it up down.
But I, I'm in consensus that we go ahead and
And then the funding for it, so I can let the chief know where
Can we take that out of maintenance? You're only talking about 600.
1300. No, it's 1300.
1300. Some water money.
Why don't we send it in, see if we get it, and then we'll
I, I think it's been approved.
That's the approved.
It's approved.
Yep.
Okay.
So the consensus was to
Is, we're gonna go forward, take it from maintenance.
Just road maintenance fund.
Well, he has excess money left over from the town truck, he's willing, right? All right. I wanna talk about voter suppression. Obviously, Lean, this is out of the investigation now, but two citizens came up to me and they thought the voting hours were at 8:00. And as reported in the Manchester Union, they had all the 2019 proposal information about the town operations, but they listed the voting hours at 8:00 a.m. And I had two complaints, two concerns by residents already. And so I think that's been under, Lean's gonna find out which reporter talked to who and got that erroneous information.
Yeah, they may have been going off of previous year's information, they may have Yeah, they may have been going off of previous year's information they made.
Right, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that's the case and we can correct it from, for here on out, but I thought that was kind of unfair to our residents.
Lean, just for follow-up, next year, just before, and I'll try and remember too, maybe we'll post it on Hot Topics just as a reminder next year.
She did actually put it on there. She said, our website said seven.
Well, yeah, it was. Ours is correct.
Just before voting?
Yep, yep.
This was Manchester Union.
I knew we did it, I knew we did it the previous years. I didn't know if it was posted this year.
Yeah.
What really bothered me is that they, they got all the great information, but they didn't get the dollars. Okay, and it could have been taken right off our website if they wanted to. So, that's, Lean's looking into that for me. I wanna know who the reporter was, and Lean has email out to them. Thank you, Lean, if you'd get us feedback to us next meeting, hopefully. Okay, next item, we have a, this is acknowledgement of our charitable donation for Woody's dad, passed away recently. And I hope it's kind of nice of the acknowledgement from us. If you recall the last meeting, next item, we approved Brian Como for the Town Forest Committee vacancy. And this is, that, we gotta assign this, but I think we already, did you, we already went through?
No, we nominated him, but we didn't.
Then you.
Yeah, we'll go to.
Yeah.
We just made a motion. We can go ahead and do that.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Como to the Town of Dunbar, Town Forest Committee For a merit, a one-year membership. Term ending March thirty first, twenty twenty.
I'll second that. I'll open up for discussion now. Thing is, the term is a short term, is it's fulfilling a term that's unfulfilled.
It's the same horse you beat last week.
It is.
Okay.
I think it's very good.
It's like, you know.
It is for the one term.
All in favor?
Aye.
One year term.
Lean, you'll let him know?
Yep.
He's gonna go to the Lincoln and be sworn in. Okay, next item is, we have a energy fair coming up. You may have seen these signs popping up. There was one at the school the other night. Saturday, April sixth, from nine AM to three thirty PM. It's basically a workshop expo. It's regional. They, they make it so more than Dunbar residents can attend, which is, kinda makes it worthwhile for the vendors to come in if they know it's just more than Dunbar. I, I went last year. I thought it was a very good workshop.
Yep.
And.
That happens at the expo center?
Say again? No, it happens right here in the community center.
Community center.
Yeah, we said something about the expo.
That's what they call it.
That's what they call it.
Oh.
Yeah.
They have an expo in Dunbar?
It's a community, yeah.
There is a sign outside of our building.
And it's already on the Hot Topics homepage.
That's this Saturday?
No, no, no.
April sixth.
They give out free LED bulbs too.
They do?
Not many, maybe one. Okay, next item. There was, you may have seen it was put on the email, that there's some issues about in the new subdivision overlook, there are some snowmobiles Riding around and they're going towards the retention pond. And that's causing some possible damage out there. On the lawn and all that, and so, the question is, we initially thought it may have been conservation property, so the Conservation Committee responded, it's not their property where they don't allow snowmobile on their properties. But, so we found out that the area involved is town property.
Correct, and that happens to be around that retention pond and the concern of Leontine, Bob Grandin in this case, he's concerned that they put a bond aside For erosion and plant.
Materials.
Materials, and this type of activity on that area might destroy what they've started and doesn't want it to.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's fair for him to notify us, and I think the town in good faith has always worked with the The Leontine developers. These people are coming in from Bo, so I think if anybody sees them down there, maybe we'll notify the police to check it out.
Well, two things I wanna, I wanna, I, I just don't want a notification. I wanna ask the chief how he intends to enforce it. And I think it's one thing we could do is put signs facing Bo, saying, preventing, preventing snowmobile travel. It's coming near the end of the season, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue any longer, but, but I think, I think we should prepare for the fall how we want to.
After this weekend, I don't think it'll.
Yeah, so, signs, I'm thinking two signs facing the Bo area, and then I just need an implementation plan, how chief would engage these people. Because Brad actually said, you could follow the snowmobile trail at the one house on Stack Drive.
I think maybe we just have the chief go and talk with that.
Okay.
Home or let him know.
Well, if, if he can still fly after today, I mean, there may be no more tracks to follow after the snow goes.
But if you bring it to their attention early on, it won't happen until, until you find another post.
Right.
Till next year.
So, let's, I need to get the chief to read this and come to us and talk this.
I've seen him on this, so I'll ask him.
Would you, I'd have the chief come in.
Yeah, we're just, see if he can fill the homework.
Yeah.
Send an officer up there.
Yeah. I think it would be, since it's out of town, how would they do that for jurisdiction? Would you coordinate that with the local police department?
Don't worry about that, but I think that they possibly could.
Yeah, I was just saying, they'll probably work that out themselves.
But I, I think, let's, let's engage, I agree with you, let's engage it now and put the, put the, put him on notice. Okay. Next item, if you recall, Lean was, did some work in progress last week about water heater replacement for the small on this end of the building. We have three quotes, they're all local, and Lean went back and had to call them back to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, but There's a, they did a pan for piping outdoors, a pan, like a safety pan underneath the water heater, so she made sure they all included that. You all can take a look at the bids. There's one bid that's outstanding a little bit lower, but But again, we can go with anyone we desire, but I think The number, those bids from a very reputable company.
See the other one?
Yes, correct.
Let's see, let's see.
Nine oh six, these two.
And then you have Dunbar, right?
Right, it's a hundred dollars, that, so it's seven. Yep, I think we're consensus.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Dunbar Fuel Service to replace a hot water tank in the building department. And that'll consist of removing the existing hot water tank and installing a new two and a half gallon electric water, electric water heater.
Second, any further discussion? I just wanna point out that, the one thing they didn't do is they all, each one had a different size. Six, four, and two.
Two and a half gallons for that smaller is more than enough.
Thank you, you read my mind.
Yeah, that's what we have in the bathroom currently.
The bathroom doesn't have a pan?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Lean, I'm okay with doing that without a pan.
Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Just leave it.
You think so?
A pan sitting under is just gonna get kicked, like if there was one in the, in the bathroom.
I guess per this code, Mike looked it up because I was questioning the, one of the quotes, and he said that under code P two eight oh one point five, Water heater pan required inch and a half deep drain to suitable waste receptor or drain to exterior of building.
Well, I don't know of any water heater in any house I've ever seen to have a pan going to the exterior of a building. Not in any construction over the last thirty years, so.
Mine's out there, new, I have no problem.
I think, I think we could waive that especially for the town, so I think we'll just go with his original bid without the pan.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't fully voted on this yet. Bob, any comment? We're just in comment period.
Okay.
That's all we have voted on it.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, I stand corrected, but we're bringing it back. The thing is, we're changing, we're changing the, changing the amount now.
No, his original amount was just there without.
Okay. Then, just to review, what amount do you have for the?
We did write the amount down in our, in our, because I can just accept it.
Ah, okay.
I didn't accept the handwritten portion over there.
All right, so we're gonna accept the bid in the amount of?
Six twenty, was it?
Six twenty, so it'd be without the pan.
Six twenty?
Six twenty, okay.
We have one down the other end of the building with no pan. We have no issues.
All right, that item is completed. Moving on to another mailbox item. If recall, earlier in the year, there was an issue between two residents along.
Holmes Road.
Holmes Road, the old, in Route thirteen, I believe. And police made the, police, chief made a great investigation. He looked at it, looked at deeds. I think he went out of his way to do research on it. But the bottom line came that they're gonna have to settle this in court as basically it's two landlords with a dispute. One of the, the only thing we got in mail today was from one of the lawyers representing one of the property owners, and they gave their opinions, and They mailed the opinion to the, the other owner, and their, this is a courtesy copy. It's good reading, but I'm just gonna have Lean keeping our legal file in case it surfaces. It's an interesting reading about property rights. But when, I, I guess the, the bottom line, what I understood is when a road is discontinued, it goes to the adjoining, returns to the adjoining piece of property. So, it's interesting read. Okay. Lean, if you could return that to your legal file.
Yep.
Okay, now, I'm gonna talk about, we're gonna do some signatures. This is post-election results. We have to report to the state our, expend our planned budget for the year. Lean, could you talk to it?
The MS, what is it, the two?
Two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two is the DRA records of the budget as approved, and it's basically The portal that I entered all the original data to, for our estimated budget transposed after the vote. So, the numbers I confirmed are verified from the original proposal to this, and then that has to be submitted to the DRA Along with everything that's attached. There's the warrant as posted, the MS six thirty-six, town report. There are some documents that have to be submitted by tax collector, the auditor, the town clerk, but these are the ones that are required by my office to.
I see it's twenty, twenty days. Do you send it as a packet?
That's what I will send as a packet. That's my packet, so the other departments are responsible for providing the other.
Okay, so we just need signatures from all three of us?
Yep.
Okay. No motion needed, because it's just, the motion was the town legislative body.
And we'll have the minutes from the town clerk and?
The MS sixty-one is from the, I think it's sixty-one from the tax collector, and then the MS five thirty-five is from the auditor.
When are the minutes due?
They're the same thing, twenty days from town meeting.
Okay.
Can you keep us appraised on the minutes? Remember last year, they got in very late?
Yep.
And remember, being in the office, we got a request one time, and then nothing ever happened, so just so we know, so maybe.
Um, I typically will get a reminder email as the town administrator that these items are outstanding, and then I'll forward it to that individual to make sure that they follow up with their.
What is the date that's recorded? Do you remember?
It's, did I give you the form from the DRA that says when dates are due, when forms are due?
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
There it is. That's the list.
Most of my twenty days have to be, I've signed them all, but. That's all.
Budgeted anyways.
Tax collectors report March first.
Yeah, she's already done that one. And that's, for some reason, they duplicated some of those forms. Those are all the same.
I have one more, Lean, this is as confidential, what is this about? Oh, this is a.
The appeals with the utility.
I understand, okay. I stole work in progress.
Correct. The information that was requested of the attorney working with our utility praiser and.
So, it was determined the impact of one Dunbar, maybe it went a certain way.
Correct, yeah.
That was just the utility lawsuit. Leave it at that. I wanna go into details of this open session. Okay, Lean, this is March. March is the time we're gonna be looking at new attorneys. When, when could you have three candidates we could look at as far as a billion schedule or a billion and all that kinda stuff? The three potential candidates we could review?
I have quite a few things on my plate right now. I'm preparing for my audit. I have to.
I'm not saying next week. I'm saying, let's say, two, two to three weeks from now. I just wanna put a mark on the, on the, I wanna put like a deadline.
Why don't you, well, would early April be a good time? Because that's, that's, we're getting close to that now.
Yeah.
We are getting close to that now. It's in two weeks.
Well, give, give me a proposal, and give me a date in April when you could present that.
I, if you want a number of different.
We wanna, we want you to, I understand you have lots of candidates. We need to narrow it down to three.
Okay.
At three, which, again, the criteria would be cost, experience with this size town, towns of our size. And I'd like to have someone with maybe some good land use experience.
Yeah, that seems to be most of the calls.
Exactly. Would you agree, gentlemen? Any other criteria? But the thing is, I don't wanna, a law firm that represents Manchester and Concord, I want one that represents smaller towns.
And I'll have to go through references and.
I think it's, I think Joe Marie's a good person that'd help you do that.
Yep, yep. April, if you can give me till like the eleventh of April.
That's a plan. Bob, the eleventh?
Yeah, so it's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. And those are the areas where we are constructing.
If I have any set facts, then I'll definitely update you before then.
And the thing is, you know, if you have ten, you find three, you look at the first five, you find three suitable candidates. You don't have to go through every single law firm you've, you've talked to. Just, you know, I'm, in your best judgment, to look at three that would be potential good candidates for us to look at.
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna spend hours and hours going through ten, you know, that's what Joe Marie's gonna do for us.
Right.
Because we don't have to go through the whole state. Local too, but sometimes we may have to meet with them. We don't want someone up in Coldwater, for example. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and speaking of law group, we have this little notification, there's another person in, in Mitchell Group. And we're not dropping Mitchell Group, we're keeping Mitchell Group for some of the outstanding issues we have in town that we're currently working. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment.
Nope, pretty boring, just like last two, they.
Good work done though. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Dave, I wanna start with you.
Um, I just wanna reemphasize what Mike said. I think the town meeting went very smoothly, and Part of that's because Lean got our paperwork all in order and ready for us, so we thank Lean Como for getting that all written up and following it Throughout the years so that our numbers made more sense to the board, because they were continuous numbers. They weren't numbers that were juggled and changed, and I appreciate that, because it helps us to keep numbers in our head through the entire year.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Bob?
Nope, I think I'm all set.
Congratulations, Bob, on your reelection.
Thanks.
Yeah, give him a hand. I tell you, the opposition was pretty fierce, sir.
Actually, I have to thank the residents that did come up and vote, you know?
But the thing is, I think most, I, I thought the reception, most residents, they didn't feel like they had to vote because there was, there was nothing, nothing.
No contest to votes.
Yeah. Okay, but you know, at one point, you sometimes wonder, with all the, people have all this interest in town, hey, come on, we have positions open, come up and take it. Even on the school board side, if people complain about the school board, hey, come and write, come and contribute to the school board, run for a position and donate some time. It's kind of sometimes disappointing when you don't see people step up to the plate, but that's just philosophy. Okay, I have nothing else. Lean, I'm gonna go to you.
Do you want me to, on a summer schedule?
Yes, let's give her an overview of what you, what you.
Okay, I was, I was a little bit busy today getting some of my numbers correct, but.
I think we may be able to extend a few more weeks.
What I can do is do what I did last year, give you two options with odd week, odd, you know, so that, I, I typically work around the holidays.
Are you going for one meeting per month?
No.
Did you guys hear me as far as we're turning back to our standard schedule? I think that.
You wanna?
I, I think we can go another, I think we'd go another week or two without having to come every week, because I think we have an agenda set up now for our town budgets that That we, you know, we give the department heads notice of what we're looking for.
Right.
We meet with them on a regular schedule, but the first few meetings we came back at, we didn't have a huge amount of business to do every week, and I think we could have gone a little longer.
Yeah.
At the end of the summer?
Yes, yeah.
I think, I think before, I like to, one thing I think between now and June, I like to get priority, is we have a good, healthy, for this year for once, we have a healthy maintenance budget. We gotta identify, and with the business going as it is, we have to identify contractors who'll come in and do some of the work we wanna get done.
When do we normally start our summer schedule?
I think in the past, it was right around.
June, right?
First week in June.
First week in June, yeah. First week in June, yeah. And I think what, what you're saying is, I think a few weeks before leading up to our, um, summer schedule.
No, I was actually thinking about the end, but we could do it either end if you wanted to.
The September first, or Labor Day holiday falls on a Monday, September second. So then, the first Thursday would be the fifth.
I don't see any reason we could, we have to meet in September every week.
Well, why don't we just.
That's what I'm thinking, extending it through that month.
Why don't you prepare the schedules, let's go, let's dwell on it for a week, and then we can, we'll come back on.
So I'll come up with two options, I'll have the, the full twelve-month calendar.
Right.
And then you.
I remember noting when we came back, there wasn't a lot on our agenda, it was kinda like this, this, that could easily have been put into another week and not, not have to meet each week.
I gotta comment if you have toys.
Okay. If you like seeing me, it's okay.
Okay, so that's, that's, uh, next week's calendar.
I'll work on it.
Alright, um, anything else, Lean?
Um, no, I think you have everything, I'll be busy working with, uh, Jeff, he's already saying that he's, wants to start working on his RFP for his truck. Um, I have the auditor, uh, sending me emails, we'll be preparing for that. The assessor's been in the office, uh, picking up billing permits for the last two days, so we'll be, uh, data entering all the new changes and getting ready to finalize the, um, new pickups for this year, which I don't anticipate is gonna be a large number. Um, again, our, our goal from the office is to have all the new values and everything set in the computer by mid-April, because, um, we have to get, what is it, April, let's see here.
The new valuations coming up.
Oh, that's, when are they coming up?
No, I said that's, uh.
They're due the last, and April is the pickup, the last pickup day for April first.
Now, you said this, this revaluation is not a, not a slight revaluation, right?
Just picking up, this up that, no, the only thing we have is, like, if someone does a building permit, we can go back and see what they did. I also have one other thing I wanna bring up, just to, if you recall, we, uh, I, I know the cafe's open, and we gave them some leeway about the signs, and they wanted to put the new banner up, but the A-frame signs, those should be taken down and, and closed to business every day, it was up tonight. And so, Lean, could you give us this, I, I don't wanna be a nitpick, or a, a nitpicky person, but the thing is, just courtesy reminder to the, uh, owners of the new cafe, um, that, um, it's, the sign should be removed at the end of the, if they had closed the business day, it's when they lock up for the date. I just don't want it, uh, it was nice to have a town comment clear, uh, within our. Agreed, gentlemen?
Yep, well, that was the agreement.
And that's all I have, the thing is, there is no non-public tonight, so I'm wanting to attain an emotion.